Hello and good afternoon. Welcome to our Tuesday, May the 9th meeting. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a whole house this morning or this afternoon. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start with Building Safety Month in Tawana. And Tony, you want to come up?
I think you guys are doing a proclamation for us today, but just wanted to talk a little bit about the county's building department. So Building Safety Month recognizes building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry. So Montgomery County is the building department for 16 communities in Montgomery County. We only do the commercial for the City of Union, but we're recognized by the Ohio Board of Building Standards as the building department. We also work with fire departments and with zoning departments to make sure that buildings are built safely, built according to code. And they often remind us that we are a single point in time when we are looking at the plans to make sure that they're built safely. And then the fire prevention officials, the fire marshals, they're always in the buildings and they are required to be in there at least once a year after we are done. So we are really happy to be here. Yesterday, we launched our new software system, Acela. We've been talking about this program for about four years. It was delayed for a number of reasons. Some of it was related to COVID-19, some of it was related to staff transition, staff capacity. But last year, we hired some new people, and one of those people was Laura Franklin. And so Laura took the lead on helping us get Acela up and going, and yesterday we launched. So we are excited about this program because there's many things that it's going to do, both for us and for the community. Just wanted to talk about some of the benefits of Acela. So during COVID, we created an online system for residential so that people would not have to come into the building. And of course, the building was closed for a period of time. We did not have the same capacity for people submitting commercial plans to be able to submit electronically. With Acela, we do get that online benefit for both commercial and residential. We will see better workflow. We'll be able to track better where projects are in status. Also, right now, whenever anyone submits drawings to us, they have to submit three copies, three paper copies, often voluminous amounts of paper. So we are, we'll no longer have that because it'll all be digital. It'll also ensure that the applicant can more readily see the project status, and it's really going to save time for everyone. It's going to save time for people coming to the county building to drop off. It's going to save time for our inspectors when they're in the field. Right now, the process is that we drop off to the fire department's drawings every week or every day, and so it will stop that process as well. And it also will ensure that we don't have to write inspection results three times. So right now, we write it on the tag, we write it on the back of the permit, and then we enter it into our legacy system, tag mark. So this is going to be really nice for both us internally as well as for our customers. So to my right is our new building official, Tony Winsler. Tony started working here on March 27th. We're really excited. We were without a building official for about a year, so this was really nice. So Tony, do you want to say anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Welcome, Tony.
He's saying, "You said it all, Tawana, stop talking."
Welcome, Tony. You cost me a bottle of bourbon with Mike Davis, but welcome.
Uh-oh. Small price, Tony.
It happens.
It happens.
But anyway, so, so do you guys have any, any questions about anything else?
No, it's, it's great to hear about the new system. Congratulations. We're finally moving into the next century, and it's good to know. And we've already had, actually, I've already had a couple of people comment about it at different events, so it's great.
Yeah, we've had a lot of people help us get here, you know, both internal people, our building team, also VCCIT, Diane, Ryan, Norm have been really integral, also working with data processing who've helped us for a long time on a lot of stuff, and then communications and Kara Hamby helping us get the word out. So it's, it's a...
So the launch yesterday went okay?
Uh, we have a few bumps, but we're, we're hoping by the end of the month that we'll have a lot of it figured out and can, can pull lots more people into it.
Okay, well, Chidi's going to read a proclamation.
Yeah, we've got a proclamation for you. You've said probably 90% of this. So I'm just going to say just a few other things, and that is, whereas it starts with you. The theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people from all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, Montgomery County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month and encourages, encourages our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month, signed by the three county commissioners. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And welcome, Tony.
And I just echo what they've said, but I do want to, we totally acknowledge the rough period that everyone's been through, including our clients and people. So commend every single person involved in getting us to where we're, Tony, we're thrilled to have you now lead this group and help us move forward. But it's been a team effort, like so many of our organizations have dealt with. So truly hats off to everyone. And this new process is only like the icing on the cake, but the real work of getting to every case that, you know, application, we really, really appreciate it. So everyone had anything to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture.
Oh, picture.
Oh, I thought we just had Chidi in the picture. Okay.
Darn it. We're going to put inspectors office.
You guys have the center.
Thank you, Tawana. Okay, we have another presentation. It's National Fentanyl Awareness Day. Is it actually today, Barb?
Yes, it is.
Come on up, come on up, Barb. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Welcome back, Barb.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you county commissioners and county administrators and our esteemed county administration for allowing me to be here today. My name's Barb Marsh, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer at 115, which is Substance Use Disorder Treatment Center here in the Dayton area. I first wanted to thank you for your support and for the recognition of May 9th as the Second Annual National Fentanyl Awareness Day. Once fueled by prescription drugs, the opioid epidemic has ravaged the United States for many years and is now fueled primarily by fentanyl, which is a synthetic opioid that is even more lethal in extremely, in extremely low doses. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the rate of overdose deaths involving synthetic fentanyl have more than tripled in the United States from 2016 to 2021. And sadly, millions of Americans, including many of our citizens here in Montgomery County, know the pain and the anguish of losing a loved one due to a drug overdose. So on this day, today, May 9th, it's a day of awareness. We will remember the loss of those, the, the individuals who we have lost, as well as those who have survived and reached recovery. I am honored to be present today on behalf of 115 and also all the citizens of Montgomery County as we continue to fight this epidemic. Through the recognition today, Montgomery County will join many voices nationally in an effort to increase our public's knowledge and awareness about the dangers, dangers of fentanyl, and we will continue to save lives. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation.
We also have a proclamation, and many of the facts that you just shared are in our proclamation, so I will cut to the chase. A couple of things I didn't hear you say that are disturbing is that child and youth deaths are a result of overdoses involving fentanyl have increased 30% in the last 10 years. And we are going to, our proclamation basically is that tonight, we are going to light our building in purple and blue, so anyone driving by will be made aware of the dangers of fentanyl. They may not know it, but we are recognizing it. And, you know, we hear story after story, just like you've said, of so many individuals. And I can only say it again, one thing that I've learned in all the times is no one should take a medicine that has not been prescribed for them. Because what so often happens is they think they're taking one thing, and that it's not what they think, and it can be deadly. Just one pill can be the end of your life. So hats off to you and 115 and all of our organizations who have, for these past years, been dealing with this crisis, and we are proud to join it. So I have a proclamation for you as well.
Thank you.
Signed by all three of us.
Thank you.
We're going to take a picture with you, too.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Here we go.
Amy, let's do what we're told. I was hoping it for you, so that's been a work. You want me to just let it go?
I know.
Okay. Our screen. Okay, Bob. You, it's up to you.
We have three resolutions today. The first is Resolution 23-593 to authorize an agreement for construction engineering consultant services with Choice One Engineering for the Derby Road Reconstruction Project, Phase Two, in the amount not to exceed $49,600 through December 31st of 2025. 594 is to amend the agreement with Burgess and Niple, Inc. for the 2022 General Engineering Services Contract by adding $200,000 to the original amount for a revised total of $900,000. 595 is to authorize the county auditor to pay by warrant $37,683.49 to the City of Moraine for permissive tax funds for the 2022 Vance Road Rehabilitation Project.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. County Sheriff?
Thank you, commissioners. Under the county sheriff, we have Resolution 596 authorizing the purchase of three 2023 Dodge Chargers from Greve Chrysler Jeep and Dodge in an amount not to exceed 114,576. We also have Resolution 597, submit a grant to the Ohio Department of Public Safety at Woodburn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Regional Agencies Narcotics and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in the amount of 80,000.
I move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. You know, getting those burn grants are always so helpful to the sheriff, and so I'm glad that we're still getting those. And then, I didn't know we switched over to Dodge Chargers.
Yeah.
So they're not going to have the SUVs anymore.
Yeah, I think they're, they're going to have a little bit of both, actually. So whatever's remaining.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. Clerk of Courts?
Thank you, commissioners. Under the Clerk of Courts, we have Resolution 598 authorizing the purchase from Justice AV Solutions, Inc. for annual audiovisual warranty, maintenance, and software support services in an amount not to exceed 23,855 through June 30th, 2024.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Common Police Court?
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 599 authorizing a subscription agreement with Lexus Nexus to provide access to Lexus Plus in an amount not to exceed 53,532 through April 30th, 2026.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Michael, is that, that subscription, how many users does it have on it? Do we know?
It's probably...
I can probably look at it, but I mean, it's like, everybody can use it, or?
I think it's the court's subscription themselves.
Just the court's subscription.
I don't think it's the wider subscription.
And we have another one. Not us, per se, but yeah. Okay. Okay. You're nodding, yes. Is that one covering you guys, too?
Yeah.
Oh, we have several?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab?
Thank you, commissioners. Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 600, accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY22 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant Formula in the amount of $51,078.39.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. County Coroner?
Under the County Coroner, we have Resolution 601, apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for the FY2023 Strengthening the Medical Examiner Coroner System Program, Purpose Area One Forensic Pathology Fellowships in the amount of 150,000.
I move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Those fellowships are great.
Absolutely.
It's good to have those. Okay, Law Library?
Under the Law Library, we have Resolution 602 authorizing the renewal of the Westlaw Subscription with Tomsters and Ruckers, Routers, in an amount not to exceed $35,599.20 for a one-year term.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. County Administrator, Michael?
Thank you. Under the County Administrator, we have Resolution 603, approve the 2023 through 2026 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Professional Guild of Ohio, PGO. Under the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on April 25th, 2023, and May 2nd, 2023, Resolution 604, approval of bills, Resolution 605, approval of travel and expenses, and Resolution 606, approval of personnel actions. All of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office. Commissioners, I'd like to talk a little bit about, after you approve, the PGO contract signing.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Commissioners, I wanted to say today that, you know, this is a really historic day for us in approving the PGO contract. This is a three-year contract with the Professionals Guild of Ohio Union, and it shows the value of our Children's Services employees, children's and the families that they serve. And, and we're very proud of the work that is being done in Children's Services, both with our caseworkers and our non-caseworkers, because it takes the support staff to support our caseworkers. This new agreement is something that we can all be very proud of. It provides PGO members with a $1,000 lump sum signing bonus and a 6% pay increase for 2023, 3% pay increases for '24 and '25, an hourly incentive for intake and ongoing casework, plus it was reached in record time. And again, I thank PGO, I thank our HR team, our Children's Services leadership team, and our finance team. This was incredible. And before we signed the new contract, again, I'd like to thank everyone, and I'd also like to thank you, commissioners, for your support in helping us to move the contract forward.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, commissioner?
I just want to say to all of you that are here, thank you for the job you do every day, and we, we know it is not, you might have one of the hardest jobs in the county. I'm sure that Matt would say, "Well, I got some sewer guys that would argue with that," but you do, and, and we appreciate it. And hopefully, this contract shows how much we do appreciate you and the work that you do. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the, our whole team, both, both teams. We got here, as Michael said, record time, and I'm sure it wasn't painless, but you made it a lot, what's the word, easier for all of us. So to all of you, thank you, thank you. Commissioners?
Our HR team, too.
I know. I was looking at Buddy when I said...
Yeah, yeah.
You want to say anything, commissioners?
Oh, yeah. No, I was just going to say thanks to everybody here. We couldn't do this without you, and I know there are some days, I'm sure, that are very, very difficult, and we understand and we appreciate it. So just thank you for all you do, and I'm just glad that we were able to get this contract signed, sealed, and delivered.
Well, it's going to be signed in. And I, I believe that this agreement is just a living example of what collaboration and dedication is all about. And so I chime in and extend my deepest appreciation to each and every employee who has dedicated their careers to children and families. And as my fellow commissioners have stated, we do fully appreciate the challenges of that, but I know in your heart of heart, this is a special calling to come to this work and to dedicate yourselves to children and families for they, for them to have a better future, for our community to have a better future, and for the world to be touched by your work, even if nobody sees it. I know you, all of us feel this way about public services, that the difference we make is not always outwardly avail, you know, not everybody knows the big differences we make, but when we touch even one child and help them to take better steps for the future, we do change. It's that, you know, throwing the starfish back in the ocean. And so my heart really goes out to each and every one of you, and the HR team, and all of us that come together to make this work continue and be possible. We thank you, thank you, thank you every day, and wish we could be there in those tough moments to say, "We know it's tough, but great job." So thank you.
Okay. Who's coming up to sign? And then we're going to probably get a picture with all of you that are here. Come on. Come on. I know. But there's probably only a few that are actually signing. Oh, do we need it? No, there's pens up there. There's pretty pens up there.
Very hurtful.
I'm a little bothered.
Very hurtful.
I can probably make sure I get a brief. And I'm not sure I'll see it as well as I should. Probably signature.
It won't be effective.
I think if we don't... We're going to run out of here. I know, but I'm... Congratulations. She's not the main person. I'm surprised, there's like 20 other people on there. I know. I tried to...
It's hard to... What is that? I'm trying to get all people to...
Tall people. Tall people. We're breaking. That's why I was... Yeah. Looking for all the orders. It's always tough. We've had a lot of practice.
We've talked about options. Yeah. A screen that comes up. We should bring the great chief disguise. Cut out some...
We should get working. She like the more... I know. I know, but I still like your boobs. I don't want them.
Sounds like a little... If this is a street grant or a grant for partners, water line replacement, whatever it is. Head out like an extra $900,000. Stormwater? It's a long... It's a stormwater project. I saw, I just saw. Yeah, the clothes, the clothes are late. For most of the summer. Yeah. I've never seen it before. I gave Todd a hundred seconds. The commissioner refused to sign a PGO. I guess I haven't.
I hope it's an action charge. I'll give it away. I hope he's calling you. I hope he's tall. Right.
Right.
Standing right there. Never. Don't come to stay out. You're talking to him. We have some tall people. We're up here, and we're still like... Maybe get more over here. He's here. Michelle? Come on. We're going to rock your wheels on your shoes, so you guys can... We have tall people. I know. Okay, watch out.
We have a movie screen there. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you should hold her. Everybody hear that? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
We've talked about options. Yeah, a screen that comes up. We should bring the great chief disguise. If this is a street grant or a grant for partners, water line replacement, whatever. Head out with like an extra $900,000. Stormwater?
It's a storm, it's a stormwater project. I saw, I just saw. Yeah, the clothes, the clothes are late.
For most of the summer. Gave Todd a hundred percent. Commissioner first to sign a PTO. I'm like, I guess I haven't been.
Stand right there.
There we go.
I don't think it's. We have some tall people. We're up here and we're still like. Maybe get more over here. He's here. Tall people.
I know.
We have a movie screen there.
Yeah, sure. Can't see.
Everybody hear that? Yeah, there you go. All right, you want her over here? Still can't see you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. Is that mine?
We couldn't see the camera, so I couldn't see.
Well, the lights just went out.
Sure somebody leaned against it. Yeah, give them a minute. There we go. I can't imagine why they don't want to stay. Especially for the hearing.
That's why I do them at the very end, after the hearing.
Well, that was great. Okay, where are we now?
Did we approve it?
We did approve it.
I.
You seconded it.
I motioned and you seconded. So you're next.
That's amazing, Michael. Michael, you deserve a gold star. Did everybody hear that? I said it live. Yep. On the air and on Facebook. He, he deserves. There what? Did you say Hawaii better than Arizona?
They're different.
Yeah. Okay, great. We're moving to you, Tyler.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
I wish everybody stayed, though.
I know.
The audience. Okay, under Administrative Services, we have several resolutions for your consideration today, beginning with 607. This authorizes a service agreement with H2O Towers LLC for tank cleaning services for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $37,500 through October 31st of 2023. Resolution 608 authorizes an Ohio Department of Transportation adopt a highway sponsor agreement with Adopt a Highway Litter Removal Service of America Incorporated for environmental services. 609 extends the price agreement with Sparks Commercial Tires Incorporated for solid waste loader tires for the Environmental Services Department through May 31st of 2024. 610 accepts a grant awarded to the City of Dayton by the U.S. Department of Justice assistance for further development and maintenance of the Criminal Justice Information System, also known as Justice Web, in an amount not to exceed $34,937. Resolution 611 terminates the lease agreement with the Village of New Lebanon for the leasing of 17,074 square feet of space located at 195 South Clayton Road, New Lebanon, effective June 30th, 2023. Resolution 612 authorizes the purchase through the Omnia Partners Public Sector Cooperative Contract from Garland DBS Incorporated for roofing materials and services for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $256,721. Resolution 613 solicits the bids for a vet supplies price agreement for the Animal Resources, Animal Resource Center. The following resolutions authorize price agreements for fire hydrants and parts for the Environmental Services Department through April 30th, 2024, with options to extend, beginning with 614 with Core &amp; Main, 615 Everett J. Prescott Incorporated. And that's all. The next two resolutions amend and renew sublease agreements, beginning with 616 with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for the leasing of office space located at the Job Center by exercising the fourth renewal option, extending the date through June 30th, 2024, and increasing the annual rental rate to $50,832.66. And Resolution 617 with the Ohio Department of Administrative Services for the leasing of 1,168 square foot of office space at the Job Center by exercising the first renewal option, extending the date through June 30th, 2025, and increasing the annual rate, rental rate, to $24,831.68. The next two resolutions authorize change orders. 618 is with Graybach LLC, General Contractor, for the Environmental Services Lab Project by increasing the original amount by $145,159.85 for a revised total of $6,225,143.51. And 619 with Triton Construction Incorporated for the Madison Lakes Renovation Project by adding $71,855 to the original amount for a revised total of $573,779. The last three resolutions approve Courthouse Square vendor license agreements for rental space on Courthouse Square through December 31st, 2023. The first is 620 with Billy Gold Bubble Tea. 621 is with Cupzilla Korean Barbecue. And 622 is with Cortland's Mobile Food Truck.
Okay, move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Today was a great day for food trucks, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I do have a question. So it just made me think about, I don't know if this is what it's for, for the Environmental Services, the roofing. I noticed in the last week, the piping on top of the new lab is, I mean, is that going to stay like that? I mean, I know it's for exhaust or whatever it's for. Will those pipes stay like that?
Correct, yes, they will.
Okay. That's interesting, yeah. Okay, all right.
There's a lot of fans and a lot of vents.
That's what I figured.
Going on in that building.
Okay. Did we already finish? Well, on to you, Matt, Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 623 accept the official check and subdividers contract from DB Solutions One LLC for the Mayfield-Daten South Development in the amount of $7,340. The next two are to authorize 100% releases of the performance bonds and subdividers contracts. Resolution 624 with Wilcon Corporation for the Wind Supply Innovation Center. And Resolution 625 with MLPC Capital Development LLC for Resinetics. The following two are to accept easement deeds for sewer lines and approve agreements for payment of $1 and record the same. 626 with Five Rivers Metro Parks for the Stillwater Lift Station Enforcement and Replacement Project. And 627 with Union Savings Bank for the Woodman Dorothy Siphon Project. And the following two are to accept official checks. Resolution 628 with Dunkin' Donuts Development in the amount of $5,000. And Resolution 629 with Valley Thrift Development in the amount of $20,000.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jerry.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have for the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 630 to authorize a rental agreement with the Salvation Army Dayton Crock Center on May 13th of 2023 in an amount not to exceed $800. 631 is authorizing a purchase from Curiosoft Technology for Nuance Communication Dragon Speak Software in an amount not to exceed $98,206.50. Then we have two agreements for substitute care services through March 31st of 2024. Resolution 632 for Ohio Guidestone. And 633 for On a Path to Change Incorporated. Then, under the Stillwater Center, we have Resolution 634 to accept a donation from the estate of Norma Jean Lesher in the amount of 5% of the Norma Jean Lesher estate.
Wow, she was a farmer employee at Stillwater Center.
That's nice. Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business Services, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners. Since Tawana was already here anyway, I asked her to stand by all the resolutions under Community and Economic Development. So she is going to read the resolutions.
Thank you, Chris. So Resolution 635 is to authorize a delegation of activities agreement with the City of Brookville for the Golden Gate Park and Westbrook Park Handicap Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $141,870 through January 31st, 2024. Also, Resolution 636, which authorizes a grant agreement with Ronald McDonald House Charities Dayton for the Ronald McDonald House Architectural Design Services Project in an amount not to exceed $500,000 through December 31st, 2024. Resolution 637 approves the Spring 2023 Economic Development Project Funding Recommendations for the Economic Development Government Equity, also known as Edge Program. Resolution 638 is to publish a notice of public hearing on housing and community development needs for the Montgomery County FY 2023 Action Plan. And finally, Resolution 639 advertises a public notice regarding the implementation of the Montgomery County CDBG Program for FY 2023 with the primary objective of the program to benefit low and moderate income persons.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A couple really great things on your list today. Yeah. A couple I want to point, well, one, I want to ask, do we know what they're doing at Brookville Park as far as updating? Is it like to, it's for handicap? So is it?
It's primarily sidewalk improvements. We've done some additional work in there in the past. And so really just to connect it. And in, in our communities that don't have low and moderate income areas, we do a lot of handicap accessibility work. And so this is a, a third or fourth project we've done in Brookville in the last five or six years.
It's a beautiful park, it really is.
Mm-huh.
And then I just wanted to point out and thank, actually, the whole team, including Ward, for the Ronald McDonald House grant, its ARPA dollars. And, you know, it's, it's one of those, it's a huge project. And this is our part of it, a little part of it compared to what they're doing. But that little bit really helped them. So thank you, and thank you, Michael, and everybody that worked on that. Thank you.
Great work for the team.
And we had some great projects.
We sure did. Yeah, wow. We had some great economic development projects.
A lot of debate, a lot of conversation.
Yeah.
Final meeting.
Yes, ma'am. And then the Edge projects that are coming forward. We've got some, we've got some interesting, big ones and good ones, so thank you. Okay, under County Commissioners, we have, oh, we didn't, we didn't? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, under County Commissioners, 640 is grant, leave, grant leave to amend the legal description. And Matt filed with the petition for annexation of 86.248 acres, more or less, from Butler Township to the City of Union. And 641 is to appoint Amber Voss to the Family and Children First Council through December 31st of 2025. 642 is to appoint Greg Klingman, Miami Township Fiscal Officer to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee for a two-year term through December 31st of 2024. And 643 is to reappoint Mike, Mike Nicoloff and Jefferson Township Trustee to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee for a two-year term through December 31st of 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we do have a hearing, 644. ADA Ramp Improvement Program. Hello.
Yes, Commissioners, it's our ramp improvement project. You heard the viewing a couple weeks ago. And Joe Dura is our project manager. He'll be doing the presentation.
Mr. Dura, Mr. Gruner, if you raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is all you got?
I do.
Sir?
Thank you, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Joseph Dura. I'm with the Montgomery County Engineers Office. This is the 2023 ADA Ramp Improvement Program. This particular project is located in Miami Township along Lamb Road, primarily stretches from Rula Court to the south, north to Oendale Drive. This is continuing effort, the county has the Engineers Office to bring up our existing ADA ramps to meet current standards, where there are no ramps at intersections, but have sidewalk or pedestrian movements, bring those facilities up. Though we've been hitting ramps in locations through other projects, such as our annual paving program, capital projects, this specific project is solely focusing on sidewalk and ADA ramps. Overall scope, replace non-ADA compliant ramps. Install ADA compliant ramps where there are none. Replace deteriorating asphalt sidewalk, which has deficiencies. It undulates vertically, creates problems for tripping hazards. Install a five-foot walk where there currently is no walk, so we're filling in a gap. And to be able to do this will require three additional, will require three temporary easements. So to walk the corridor, starting at the north at Oendale Drive, moving south. This is at a signalized intersection. As you see in some of these photos, you can see the orange pedestrian push button, but there are no ramps here. So pedestrians with mobility issues are not able to cleanly traverse this. So we need to get those facilities up, be able to hit those buttons, traverse across the crosswalks. This is that asphalt path. It is hard to show. What the photo on the right is trying to show is this is where one of the spots where the asphalt has heaved up, creates a tripping hazard. If you are an individual who utilizes a wheelchair, could create a barrier to be able to cross through that. So we'll rip all this out, put a brand-new five-foot-wide concrete walk. It's down at Terreland, first intersection south. Again, there are no ramps here. Photo on the right, the sidewalk even stopped short of the intersection. This is a T-intersection. Photo on the left, Lamb Road's on the right, Terreland's coming in as a T to the, on the left. There, this photo, what we are is on the other side of the intersection where there is a sidewalk along the west side of Lamb Road. There's no ability for people from Terreland to get from the east side over to the west side. So we will provide that connectivity. This is moving down, a four-way stop at the intersection of Lamb Road and Lehigh, northeast corner. Again, showing this location where the sidewalk just ended. Doesn't get people out to the intersection. We will make that connection. This is the, photo on the right is the southeast. Photo on the left is the north, I'm sorry. Photo on the right is the southwest. Photo on the left is the northwest. Though the ramp, though the wall comes up, you can see the raised curb, which is again a vertical barrier. So we will rip all that out and put in a brand-new ADA compliant ramp. Moving down to Rula Court, though we do have ramps, they do not meet ADA compliance. So we will have to replace those. This is on the, so Rula Court is on the east side of Lamb Road, going to the west side of Lamb Road, immediately across from Rula Court. There, this is the gap in the walk along the west side where we will be connecting sidewalk from the north, which is shown on the photo on the left, to existing sidewalk on the south of this gap with a proper five-foot-wide walk. To be able to do all this, three properties are going to, we're going to be requesting some temporary easements, starting down at Rula Court on the west side. This is Presbyterian Church. And then as we move up between Terreland and Oendale, we have temporaries due to two driveway aprons that are impacted as part of the new ramp. But starting again at the Presbyterian Church, you can see the gap in the sidewalk. So all the walk's going to be an existing standard highway easement just due to the grading, putting a brand-new walk through existing ground. We'll need that temporary to make sure everything grades and drains properly. So that area is shown in blue. It's just showing the area in front, so it's relatively flat. We don't anticipate a lot of impact, but physical ability to construct, make sure things drain properly. Driveways will not be impacted. Access will be maintained throughout the project. Moving north, Terreland is on the left. This is the VB1 parcel, just showing the temporary needed in blue. The reason for this is predominantly because of the drive apron that we will be impacting. The driveway apron is monolithic with the asphalt drive or asphalt sidewalks. So we'll be tearing out the asphalt drive apron, which is all in asphalt here to there, and putting it all back in concrete. And because of that tie-in, that's why we need the temporary. Same scope of work is at the third and final parcel, which is just south of Oendale. This is another VB1 parcel. Again, you have the asphalt sidewalk with an asphalt drive apron. We'll be impacting all that, so we'll be replacing all this in concrete, tying into an existing concrete drive. Overall project cost, about $250,000 for construction. We'll hire a professional real estate appraiser for the temporary easements. Design's been in-house. We're finishing up the design now, moving into the right-of-way phase. We look to advertise this project in November with construction starting in March of 2024. All traffic on Lamb Road and side streets will be maintained during construction. And if anyone has any questions.
Questions, anybody?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, we do have, we have more coming.
Okay, we do have, looks like we have more coming.
We got it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, is there a motion? Yeah. What? You make it.
Oh, I make it. All right. I don't have it.
Oh, we have to have a motion for this?
Yep, that's what you have right there.
It's not just the viewing, it's the, the real thing.
It's the real thing.
Thank you.
Well, let me pull that up. Okay, I'll go ahead and do it.
She's got it. She needs it.
She has it?
No, you have it.
I, I can do it. All right, I move to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the 2023 ADA Ramp Improvement Program in Miami Township. And recognize, it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Sorry about that. Should have had it pulled up.
Okay.
Same here, I'm sorry.
What are you sorry about?
Nothing. Okay, well, you're forgiven for whatever it was.
Okay.
Now we have comments by citizens. Marion Perry, you want to come up? I know, I saw you come in.
There she is.
There she is. Good afternoon. Yeah. She's been here. No, I know, but we still have to hear you.
Okay.
Please give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Marion C. Perry, address 5140 Alton Road. What I'm mainly asking for help is for grants and funds to improve my area. Reason being is, they recently took the bus route off my area. If I get sick or hurt, I can't get to a doctor or nurse or anything. That's point one. Point two, there are a lot of seniors in the area that need help. We don't have anywhere to go, and the safest place if you're a senior is home, but you would like to go out, or you'd have to call a bus company to take you somewhere. That includes shopping and whatever. Next thing I'd like to see is, like I said, grants and fundings for something like a goodwill, something that would help my community, because we are lacking everything. There's nothing close, homeful when it gets built will be one place we can go, but until then, we still have nothing. We have no bus. How I get around, most of the times is either through a senior resource or senior resource connection and/or lift. I have to call a lift to take me to the West Town hub.
Right.
And then from there, I have to take a bus if I can get there on enough time to get to where I need to go. If I don't, I have to wait for the next bus, and that's why I'm always late for something. But mainly, my community needs funding or grants or loans to help us build up the community, because there is nothing out there, nothing. No grocery store. We have a lot of parks, and we have a lot of problems. Here recently, I know of two of my neighbors, their cars were stolen because they were keys. So they ended up in one of the parks. But like I said, right now, we have nothing. And that would be a shame that you would let people older than me stay home because they have nowhere to go, and they can't get out to go somewhere. So mainly, that's what I'm asking for. They deserve something, and I'm asking for a goodwill, a library, because a library we have, we can't get to it. Where they put it, it's on Albert, no, Abbey, excuse me.
Abbey.
There's no way to get to it if you don't have a car, or you have to call a paratransit, and I don't like paratransit. So everything every other community has, they have. We have nothing. Please help us. Please, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. I recently met with one of your trustees to talk about some of these issues, and I'm glad you brought up the lift, because that is through RTA.
Yeah.
And that is, and Jefferson Township's not the only area that that is happening, you know, as they've had to cut, but they provide the service. So, I think it's a matter of, you may be getting the times for the, at the West Town transfer station, but the lift, I mean, it can take people to places.
Well, actually, what they do is they take you from one area to another area that is not designated, meaning it's, I want to call it a deserted area too. It has to fall in their group.
Yeah.
To get there.
Okay, well, thank you. We hear you. We've discussed the different things and partnerships in, in trying to get some activity out your way, so we'll just keep having the conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Feaster. Welcome.
You know the drill.
Willie Feaster. You know, I, you know, things happen to people that affects us, sometimes bad. But I had to talk about the tragic incident of the, of the day over here at UD with the young man who was crushed by the car. You know, it, it made me, when it came on my phone, it made me think of the scripture in the Bible that says, you know, no one knows the second minute, hour, day, when life is gonna go. No one. They graduate and then go to fix your car, and you get crushed and killed. Young. But we as people, we live life like, it ain't no ending to it. You know, we just go about it, eh, you know? Sometimes, you know, I, I get lost for words, you know? Because I'm human. But, it just, it's one of them times, man, I got lost for words, you know? I'm really stuck. But, it was things I was gonna sell this, but I'm stuck. So, I really know how to proceed with this no more, but I, all I can say is, you know, you know, oh, I'm really stuck. It was just a sad day, you know? It was just a sad day for the young man, you know? Oh, I'm stuck, I'm sorry.
No, that, you know, I think, I, I think it's something that, when I heard about it too, I mean, you, you think it's one of the happiest days of his life, graduating from UD, and then, you know, he's from Pennsylvania, Pittsburgh, and probably needed to do something on his car, and it's just, it's tragic, it truly is sad, and you're right, I mean, it should make us all pause and be thankful and, and, yeah, it's, it's, you know, I hate, I hate tra, any kind of death, but when it's something tragic, it's even harder, so we empathize with you on that one.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
Okay, County Administrator, do you have any comments?
Just briefly, Commissioner, thank you. You know, you often hear me talk about, one of the greatest gifts we can give our young people is to show them a work experience before they graduate from high school. And our summer youth work session begins next month, and there's still time for employers to get involved. The, the county pays all the wages, and we also pay the workers' comp insurance for the youth. But you also get an opportunity to give back, to give a mentorship, to strike a relationship with a young person that could be life-changing in their lives. So we ask businesses to help us provide their training. Many employers have liked the young people so much that they've actually retained them year after year. They actually come back to the program and they actually ask for the same youth over and over again. So it's a great thing to be a part of. You're teaching our next generation of workers, and you're showing them what it means to hold a job and how to conduct themselves at an employer work site. So I would ask the employers out there, please find out more about our youth works program. You can find out at thejobscenter, all one word, dot org, or call 937-224-1482. Again, thejobscenter, one word, dot org, or call 937-224-1482. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. So as Michael said, you know, we're gearing up. We've had 400 youth registered at our youth job fair last week. Fifty employers participated, and of those employers, we had Amazon, Dayton Public Schools, Cincinnati Children's, and of course, Montgomery County. And it was so great to see that so many people got involved and care about job readiness for our young people. Again, as Michael said, we're still taking people, so if you know anyone between 14 and 24 who would like to start working and get a great work experience, send them to our Youth Resource Center at the Job Center and, or, which is on Edmond Moses, hopefully everybody knows that by now, 25-plus years we've been there.
Yeah.
Or they can call 937-224-1482. And I realize that some of our comments were not given about the PGO contract, and so I just want to say something. We have a few members still here, so I just want to make sure that we cover all these comments that our great team put out. So, PGOS, our Children's Services mission is protect children and restore families. And, and we don't want to lose sight of, of, we, we get the predict, protection part a lot, but restoring families is also really one of the goals. And so, the new agreement that we signed today will help strengthen our team by increasing their tuition reimbursement from $3,500 to $5,250 annually, and it will help others further their education, sharpen their skills, and show, and that really, that amount is a big, is, for those of you that have gone through school recently part-time, you know that that's a big bump, $5,250. So, I think we'll continue to show our employees how much we care about you and keep up the great work. That's it for me.
Okay. Well, I don't know if anybody knows this, but this week is National Nurses Week, and it's a great time to say thank you to the wonderful nurses that we have in our region. Now, the theme this year is "You Make a Difference," and nurses truly make an impact in our lives. I want to give a special shout-out to the nurses who work directly for the county at Children's Services and at Stillwater Center. We thank you and we appreciate everything you do, the work that you do every day and the lives you touch, make you the VIPs, not just this week, but every week. Now, if you'd like to join the county's nursing staff, we have open LPN and RN positions, which you can find on our website, mcohio.org.
And I have a special place in my heart for nurses. My mother was a nurse, my aunt was a nurse, and my grandmother.
Wow.
Yes.
You broke the mold.
I know, I failed.
Well, I wouldn't say that.
I serve in a different way. I serve in a different way. But having grown up, I know what nurses give. You know, they, the hours put in, the pay wasn't always the best, but I know that my mother, aunt, and grandmother are typical of the wonderful individuals that choose nursing as a profession. So I encourage anyone who has that calling to do that, because we need individuals with the heart for the work more than ever. So I'm gonna bring up, you know, last week was a great week for sustainability in Montgomery County. We had a wonderful sustainability luncheon, and we opened our new exhibit at the Boonshoff Museum of Discovery, so it's just less than a week old, so if you haven't been there, you need to go check it out with your little ones. It was awesome, and it's called Conserve, Compost, Compost and Cultivate, and it features several interactive stations. Remember when we did the training online that's available? That's right there, so, and some of the games are hard if you're not used to, you gotta be fast of what, what should be recycled or not, and all of that. So it's a real challenge for us adults as well. We also announced at the luncheon, our solar co-op, that the new Solar United Neighbors Initiative is a collaboration that we're doing with the city of Dayton. And that, we had done it for residences, now we're doing it for companies and nonprofits to get in on it, so we encourage anyone, and you've heard me, if you've heard me once, you've heard me more than once, say, I went solar a year and a half ago, so I'm a huge proponent. I love getting a, an electric bill for zero these months, so it, it can really make a difference. It is an investment, though, I won't fool you, but there's great opportunities right now in this co-op. If you're looking at it, they can answer all your questions and really make the case for you, and then it's up to you to make the decision if it's right for you. So, there's a story in the news section on our, our website, there's information, so go to mcohio.org if you want to learn more about the co-op, so it was a great week.
Great.
Yeah. So, our next meeting is next Tuesday, right here, at 1:30.
Move to adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Have a great week.